...before year 2023 ends. In addition to this, there have been a significant number of measures crafted to propel economic recovery and continuous development for every sector. We support the move to improve spending efficiency through the realignment of confidential government funds in the proposed 2024 General Appropriations Act to other budget priorities in order to further uphold the president's socioeconomic agenda and to promote greater budget transparency, openness, and accountability. Being at the forefront of public service, we see this declaration as an integral move to address the urgent needs of our fellow countrymen. The NUP deeply appreciate the efforts of the House leadership in ensuring that this legislative chamber continues to be united in working hand in hand to overcome the rising economic and security concerns of our country. This is the best time to show that this August chamber stands as one in support of the president's pursuit of guaranteeing the security and stability of our nation. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, once again, the National Unity Party express its full and unwavering support to Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes and House Bill 1414. Maraming salamat po.
Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recognize Representative Robert Ace Barbers for his manifestation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The distinguished gentleman from the Second District of Surigao del Norte is recognized. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Majority Leader. Mr. Chairman, allow me to read the statement on behalf of the Nationalista Party. "We, the members of the Nationalista Party, affirm our full support and appreciation to Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as he continues to uphold and defend the integrity and independence of the House of Representatives. This ensures that each member of the House will be able to perform their duties as duly elected representatives of the people with pride and conviction. We believe that with his strong work ethic and quiet but purposeful leadership, the House of Representatives will remain a valuable partner of the current administration in crafting legislations for the betterment of the Filipino people. We also congratulate Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for garnering a trust rating of 60% and a performance rating of 61%, as reflected in the latest OCTA survey ratings. These ratings are a reflection of his strong leadership, which enabled the House of the People to pass the General Appropriations Bill for 2024 in record time and passed months ahead of schedule all 20 LEDAC priority measures targeted for 2023. Once again, on behalf of the members of the Nationalista Party, congratulations and mabuhay, Mr. Speaker."
Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recognize Representative Michael John Arduavit for his manifestation.
The Chair would like to recognize the distinguished gentleman from the First District of Rizal. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, dear colleagues. As members of the House of Representatives, we follow a hierarchy of loyalty. First and foremost is loyalty to the state embodied partially by our individual constituencies; second, our institution, which has been assailed; and only then, our respective parties. Having said that, as the administrative head of our party, the Nationalist People's Coalition in the House of Representatives, we strongly reaffirm our decision made on the 25th of June 2022 to elect Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as first among equals, the Speaker of our House. In doing so, we also reaffirm our loyalty to this institution and reaffirm our loyalty to the Republic of the Philippines. We support Resolution 1414. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you very much, Representative Arduavit of the First District of Rizal. Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to recognize Representative Johnny T.P. Mintel for his manifestation.
The Chair would like to recognize from the Second District of Surigao del Sur, Representative Bimentelli. You have the floor.
Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, Dipartido Democrático Pilipino, Lakas ng Bayan, reaffirms our steadfast support for House Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. We wholeheartedly stand behind his leadership and acknowledge its exceptional performance as evidenced by this substantial increase in his trust ratings from 38% to 60% between 2022 and 2023. This remarkable achievement underscores his sterling commitment to serve the Filipino people and recognizes the reality that we are truly in the right direction in effecting unity and change in the service of our people. We can do more, and we can still do better. A visionary and activist in equal measure, Speaker Romualdes's leadership style has truly transformed the House of Representatives into a genuine House of the people. His commitment to align legislative work with the needs of our fellow Filipinos and pro-poor initiatives is both admirable and inspiring and reflects the results of these recent surveys. We sincerely believe that our collective efforts in the enactment of important legislative measures were made in the best interest of our people. It is essential to recognize that this Congress fully respects and firmly abides by the jurisprudence in the passage of various appropriation and revenue bills. It is imperative that we promote a unified and unifying leadership for our people at these critical times with the hard work, dedication, and commitment to principled unity of our members. Congress will continue to provide steadfast and solid support for the legislative priorities of this administration. Mr. Speaker, Dipartido Democrático Pilipino, Lakas ng Bayan, reiterates our commitment to uphold the integrity of this institution and affirms our solidarity to the leadership of Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to recognize Representative Margarita Miggs Nograles for her manifestation.
The Chair would like to give the floor to Representative Nograles of PBA Partilis.
Mr. Chair, esteemed members of the House of Representatives, I rise on a matter of collective consensus for and on behalf of the Partilist Coalition Foundation Incorporated, or the PCFI, headed by the Honorable Elizalde Co. We, the PCFI, stand before you today to uphold the integrity of the House of Representatives and affirm our support to Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. As representatives coming from a diverse spectrum and sectors of partyless organizations, we acknowledge the profound significance of a steadfast and principled leadership in steering our legislative actions and assuring that the interests of the Filipino people are not just rightfully represented but also effectively championed. Speaker Romualdes has consistently displayed and continues to do so a unique blend of astute leadership, unwavering dedication, and unwearied integrity, all of which earns our deepest respect. The recent trust ratings reveal that public confidence in Speaker Romualdes's leadership is increasing. As such, it provides a testament to his unrelenting commitment to ensure an independent, efficient, and effective leadership process. Likewise, the high trust rating of the Honorable Speaker Romualdes shows a clear manifestation that the people themselves have felt and feel the impact of our work here in Congress. Under the judicious stewardship of Speaker Romualdes, we have successfully enacted significant legislations that directly address the urgent needs and aspirations of all our constituents as members of the House of Representatives. This includes the 5.768 trillion peso national budget for 2024, which propels and drives the vision of our beloved President, President Ferdinand Marcos Jr., for a steadfast and united nation at para sa bagong Pilipinas. The persistent dedication of Speaker Romualdes to the legislative process is an instrumental and driving force for the House to move forward. For this enables us to tackle critical issues and enact crucial laws that significantly contribute to our nation's progress and future. We, the PCFI, reaffirm our collective decision and unflinching position to protect national security and improve public welfare. Equally, we reemphasize commitment to transparency, accountability, and ethical governance, which is clearly validated by our clean financial records as attested by the Commission on Audit. Evidently, the inclusive and collaborative leadership style of Speaker Romualdes has created an atmosphere of unity and cooperation amongst us, surpassing political affiliations. His ability to unify the diverse voices of every member of the House and forge consensus among us is an undeniable testament to his exceptional leadership skills. We also applaud Speaker Romualdes's steadfast dedication to upholding the principles of transparency, accountability, and ethical governance. His unwavering commitment to these values has played a pivotal role in revitalizing public trust in our institution and fortifying the credibility of the House of Representatives as the voice of the people. As members of the Partilist Coalition, we stand united in our appreciation and solidarity with Speaker Romualdes. We pledge to continue working in unison with him and our fellow lawmakers to fulfill our mandate of advancing the welfare and interests of the various marginalized sectors we each represent. Once again, we, the PCFI, reiterate and recommits our unwavering support for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes's leadership and reaffirms to continue our commitment to upholding the integrity of the House of Representatives. Together, let us persist in our legislative endeavors, stay united in our shared mission to serve the Filipino people, and remain unshaken in our mandate to shape a brighter future for our nation. Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow colleagues.
Thank you very much, Representative Nograles, PBA Partilis. Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recognize Representative Erwin T. Tulfo for his manifestation.
The Chair would like to recognize the distinguished gentleman from ACIS Partilis. You have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished colleagues, as the number one party list in Congress, I'd like to speak on behalf of our group. Mr. Chairman, I strongly and wholeheartedly support House Resolution Number 1414, upholding the integrity in honor of the House of Representatives. It is crucial for us to maintain the trust and respect of the people in the legislature. And I believe this resolution will reaffirm our commitment to transparency, accountability, and ethical conduct in governance. Expressing the sense of the House of Representatives through this resolution is a positive step towards ensuring that we, the duly elected representatives of the people, are dedicated to serve the best interest of the Filipino people with utmost integrity. With a sentiment of wish to express by our sincere appreciation for and wholehearted support to the leadership of Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Under his guidance, the House of Representatives has shown remarkable dedication to addressing the pressing issues facing the entire nation. We are also a witness to the Speaker's commitment to promoting unity and cooperation among the members of the House, which is truly commendable. His brand of leadership embodies not only transparency and integrity, but also fairness and equality. We stand in full support of Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes's leadership of the House of Representatives and his efforts to serve the Filipino people and uphold the principles of our democracy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, good afternoon.
Thank you very much, Representative Tulfo of ACIS Partilis. Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we recognize Representative Toby Tianko for his manifestation.
The Chair would like to recognize the distinguished gentleman from the Lone District of Navota City. You have the floor.
Thank you, Senior Deputy Majority Leader, and thank you to our chairman. I join, dear colleagues, I join the esteemed leaders of all political parties in the House of Representatives in congratulating Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for his high trust rating based on OCTA Research's latest report. According to the third quarter survey by OCTA Research, House Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes has garnered a 60% trust rating and a 61% performance rating, an increase of 6% from July to October 4 of this year and a significant 22% increase from 2022. Speaker Romualdes himself attributes these positive ratings to the united efforts of the House in serving the Filipino people. Every decision made and every bill passed reflects the commitment and consensus resulting from a series of open and sometimes contentious deliberations by the members of this House with diverse political persuasions. Under his leadership, with the majority support of equally dedicated members who prioritize initiatives aligned with the people's desires, the House of Representatives passed the 5.768 trillion national budget for 2024. The House of Representatives and its members are always ready to make our beloved Philippines a peaceful, strong, and prosperous nation. And we shall remain steadfast in addressing pressing issues that impact ordinary Filipinos. Without an iota of doubt, our collective action will continue to pursue responsive and relevant legislations to address social inequities and economic disparities. The House of Representatives under the leadership of Speaker Romualdes will persist in bringing about policies that will enhance the well-being of every Filipino. Thank you very much.
Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, there being no people left to wish to make a manifestation, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 1414 without amendment.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1414 without amendment. As many as in favor of House Resolution Number 1414, please say aye. As many are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 1414 is adopted without amendment. Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the secretariat be directed to prepare the report to the Committee of the Whole on House Resolution Number 1414 and thereafter distribute copies of the said report to all members.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The secretariat is directed to prepare the report of the Committee of the Whole and thereafter distribute the copies of the said report to all members. Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the suspension of the meeting to allow the secretariat to perform their assigned tasks.
Meeting suspended. Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, copies of the report of the Committee of the Whole on House Resolution Number 1414 as prepared by the secretariat have been distributed to all members present. I move to approve the said committee report.
There is a motion to approve the report of the Committee of the Whole. As many as in favor of the committee report, please say aye. As many are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. The committee report is approved. Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Rule 59, Section 140 of the Rules of the House, the chairman is instructed to report its action to the House.
Noted.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn the meeting of the Committee of the Whole. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion and move to recognize the minority leader.
The minority leaders recognized.
Suspended, Monsieur.
Meeting suspended.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as I previously stated, I move to adjourn the meeting of the Committee of the Whole.
The meeting of the Committee of the Whole is adjourned. De Shun Shu, Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, I move to proceed with the additional reference of business. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the additional reference.
to read the title of the Additional Reference.
Additional Reference of Business Committee Report, Committee Report Number 813, submitted by the Committee of the Whole House. Rare House Resolution Number 1414 entitled "Resolution Upholding Integrity in Honor of the House of Representatives and Expressing Appreciation, Solidarity and Support to the Leadership of Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes." Sponsors: Representative Delipe Marcos Gonzalez Aurelio.
The Committee on Rules. Your leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business, I move to consider House Resolution Number 1414, as contained in Committee Report Number 813, submitted by the Committee of the Whole House, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the House Resolution Number 1414.
House Resolution Number 1414, Resolution Upholding the Integrity in Honor of the House of Representatives and Expressing Appreciation, Solidarity and Support to the Leadership of Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Your leader.
Mr. Speaker, as Chairperson of the Committee of the Whole House, it is my honor to sponsor House Resolution Number 1414, as contained in Committee Report Number 813, submitted by the Committee of the Whole House. Honorable Speaker, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, the House of Representatives, under the leadership of the honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, has been characterized by trailblazing leadership that has moved legislators to collectively work for the realization of developmental and innovative legislative action, unprecedented in scale and monumental in terms of its enduring impact to Philippine society. Seeing how the House leadership continuously changed lives of many, it enthuses me and the majority of the members of the August Chamber to support the leadership of Speaker Romualdes. The encompassing majority believes that if we continue to work together, the House of Representatives could more effectively alleviate poverty, build on a stronger future ahead, and compete on efficiencies through laws, measures, and policies that strengthen our republic and address the most pressing issues confronting us today. The majority believes that this chamber could achieve all this and many more under the thriving and inspirational leadership of Speaker Romualdes. While we recognize that legitimate criticisms are but part of the organs of democracy, we are unfazed. We continue to improve our delivery of our constitutionally mandated obligation to serve the people through legislation. As guardians of the Filipino people's rights and interests, House members are duty-bound to ensure that we are armed with the people's collective consciousness to help us discern whenever good leadership works and when political power is being wielded as a weapon of oppression and counter-productivity. We are guided by our moral compass and our constituents' trust and confidence in making sure that we advocate comprehensive and inclusive growth for all. We recognize significant accomplishments and express gratitude for the great work done. This August body has seen its more than fair share of challenges, given the imperative duty to initiate key appropriation and revenue measures. Rising to the challenge, Mr. Speaker, the honorable Speaker unceasingly and proficiently willed us to be united and resolute in approving measures to maintain the upward growth for our economy, increase job, and income opportunities for all Filipinos. With this guidance, we remain steadfast in the space of this immense responsibility. Leading a 309-member legislature is no mean feat. As your Majority Leader, I should be the first to know. But Speaker Romualdes has shown his mettle in leading the charge to pass the 2024 General Appropriations Bill on time, as well as to approve all 20 LEDAC priority bills in three months ahead of schedule. It is rare to find leaders who could show unity among members of the House of Representatives. It takes more than just finding consensus amongst us. It requires molding and creating this consensus. An effective leader does not merely march on where the path may lead. He takes an unpaved road and creates a trail for the rest to follow. The House of Representatives requires a shared vision that could pave way for synergy and targeted, concise, and definitive action. It is therefore but proper that we stand firm in support of Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes for his exceptional reformative and effective leadership. Let us also continue to uphold the integrity and honor of the House of Representatives as it continues to exemplify the essence of democracy, ensuring the voice of the Filipinos through their elected representatives is valued and acted upon in form of legislation. To the King, Mr. Speaker, today I declare that I am fortunate to have known in this lifetime a kind of leader who embodies these characteristics. It is with great honor that I am serving as a member of this esteemed body along with a leader who could stand tall in the middle of adversity and emerge victorious like a rock unmoved by relentless waves that attempt to overthrow it. To express the majority's full and equitable support to the continued leadership of Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, it is my pride and distinct honor to sponsor Committee Report Number 813 of the Committee of the Whole, upholding the integrity, the honor of the House of Representatives, and expressing appreciation, solidarity, and support to the leadership of Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 1414.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 1414. Second. As many are in favor to the House Resolution Number 414, please say aye. And those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 1414 is now adopted. Your leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the distinguished minority leader, Representative Marcelino C. Libanan, to make a manifestation, to explain his vote.
The representative of the Partilis for Peace, the minority leader, Marcelino Libanan, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. The poet Alfred Lord Dennison once wrote these words to describe a besieged light brigade of the British Army. Cannon to the right of them, cannon to the left of them, cannon behind them, volley and thunder. Mr. Speaker, this is how we, as an institution and as members of the House of the People, feel as cannons to our right, left, and behind us, volley and thunder fired by certain waters in the Philippine society, waters that have failed to move on and to move forward. But we shall not be like the soldiers of the Light Brigade. Today, the House as the Committee of the Whole has collectively, majority and minority alike, stood together to defend the integrity of this august institution from the onslaught of a few who still hold illusions to powers. Today, I rise both as four-peace Partilist representative and House Minority Leader to explain that we should not and we should never countenance assaults against the integrity of the House of the People and its leadership. During the 11th to the 13th Congresses of the Philippines, I was a member of the House as representative of the Lone District of Eastern Samar. Now, I am a representative of four-peace Partilists. All this time, and even during the hiatus of my service in this House, I can say that this, the 19th Congress, has been the most productive of them all. Upon submission by the Executive Department of the National Expenditure Program, we immediately buckled down and closely scrutinized the proposed national budget and come up with our version of the General Appropriations Bill. Long before the end of the calendar year, we have in the 19th Congress relegated the "reenacted budget" quote-unquote into the dustbins of the past. The first regular session of the 19th Congress also saw this House of the People passing up to third reading about 90% of the executive and LEDAC priority bills. Unity and more importantly, quality bills have been passed by the House of the People during the first regular session. That we have been able to achieve this feat is due to the able leadership of the House, most especially our beloved Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. With Speaker Romualdes at the helm, we have been able to navigate the labyrinth of the legislative process and produce quality legislation. We have done so, Mr. Speaker, by respecting the various divergent points of view of individual House members who stand to speak their minds. We have done so, Mr. Speaker, without railroading legislation or stifling the voice of those in the minority as well as those in the majority. This, Mr. Speaker, is true democracy in real time. Thus, I stand here today and abaste in my support for Speaker and the House of the People. Although our leadership and our institution has been found itself besieged like troops of the Light Brigade, we shall not be like those hopeless soldiers. Instead, today we stand tall and proud in our defense of the House, its members, its leadership. Today, let us raise the flag of the House as the soldiers in Iwo Jima, the soldiers in Iwo Jima did. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Majority Leader is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn session until tomorrow, November 7, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection for the adjournment? The Chair is none. Session adjourned until tomorrow, Feb. uh, November 7, Tuesday, at 3:00 PM in the afternoon.